Okay, we've got an update on Bud's presentation.
I would like to tell you all something first before we start. My husband did have the test when I was last here. He is going to have surgery next Tuesday. So he definitely be after on the meeting.
That's it.
Tuesday morning, he will have surgery. They hope to be in the hospital today.
Well.
I appreciate your thoughts.
And Brad, come over.
Okay, if the front row of you were here can kind of turn around a little bit. You know, we'll be trying to figure out how we could explain why we got to where we are. I'm not going to get through that presentation. But I do want to show you some different slides of staff working together. And Frank, Lois, Karen, and Jessica, and Megan, and everybody else has worked on this because it's been a lot of fun trying to get it done. Okay, let me back up. We talked about the ever loan taxes and how they've actually been kind of flat over the past few years. And we're going back to six, seven, eight, nine, you said there's growths. And then at nine, we did, uh...
Where's the past quarter?
The economy finally found its way down the side of Georgia and went down. Our ever loan taxes did. And then our lost collections, as you can tell, you start over at 2004 and right across to 2014, that's our projection. And it looks like we're going to give our projection or a little bit below our projection. We're not exactly sure what it's going to fall in right now. But then, the gas fund transfers, we've talked about them before. We haven't transferred anything out of the gas fund and general funds since 2012. We have nothing projected. We didn't transfer anything for 2013. And we have no transfers scheduled for 2014. This is important. When we start looking at this stuff, just come over here to 1997 and work your way across. But we've got some slides in here that are going to show you about around 2005 and 2006, what happened. This was a nine... This is a $900,000 transfer in '05, about a $700,000, almost $700,000 transfer in '06. And then you work your way across to those transfers out of the gas fund. Retirement cost, B. 1996, '98, we're at half a million. You come over to 2009, we're at 3.6 million. We had to kick in a $2 million cash into the retirement fund so that we could get the unfunded liability up to the point that the state of Georgia would accept it. 2010, we, uh, we froze retirement and it came down to 2.2 million. 2011, it dropped to 1.4. That's when the freezing of retirement was started. I'm on track. Freezing of retirement kicked in. 2012, we had to bump the cost back up because early retirement kicked in. So you have those additional costs in there. And then, uh, 2013, 2014, if we're going to unfreeze the retirement system, we've got to kick in a cash contribution of $721,000. Otherwise, we would still be around the 2.1 or 2.2 contribution into the plan. Okay. That's one, that's one cost to decrease. Then you look at our insurance in 2006. Worker's comp was $291,000 and our liability was $353,000. Fast forward, follow the lines. Guerilla liability right now is $492,000 a year. So that, now these are cumulative, folks. You have to add these together to see how much cost doing business is costing the city of Tipton. So you're looking at, what's that, five, six, $650,000 for insurance, not including health insurance, from 2006. And then you come to 2013, you're at seven, eight, almost eight, a little over $850,000.
What, wait, I'm, I'm sorry. In 2006, how much?
Add these two together.
Oh, okay.
About $650,000, okay? So you see what the cost of liability insurance has gone. Fuel costs, everybody knows what fuel's done. It's, uh, we were paying $2.5, uh, $2.75 for diesel and gasoline. And we're up there at three, between three and $3.50 now for the two of them. Here's the B. 2006, we're paying a half a million dollars in health insurance. 2013, we're paying 1.2 million in health insurance. $700,000 cost down. What have we done to make up these shortfalls in our budgets? Well, we've done a lot of things. But what we haven't done, well, let me show you this first. Agency funding cuts, workforce down, recruiting increase for employees, temporary staffing. Y'all seen these slides before? This is the impact on the payroll for the city of Tipton since 2005. You went from 7.9 to a high of 9.5 million in 2008. And what the city of Tipton's done has gone from 9.5 million in payroll to 7.4 million in payroll. That's a $2.1 million swing that we've reduced the payroll for the city of Tipton. You throw your benefits on top of that, it's $3 million. Throw the freezing of retirement on top of that, $721,000, you're 300 and, or 3.75 million dollars that we've done so that we did not have to raise the military.
All right, now go through those last steps of D. I'll have, I'll say this, but go through how you've added the insurance to this.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to add, since 2006, we're going to add an increase of, uh...
About $700,000.
Right, all right.
And then back up from that. Your insurance cost, you've got your liability insurance is the blue line.
Right.
And your red line is your worker's comp insurance.
So we come from six million to, uh, about five million increase.
Gone from, this is thousands.
Right, I know.
Are you, you're talking, you adding all of them together?
No, I'm going, I'm seeing the increase from 2006 to 2013.
Six to nine.
Right.
Six to nine, okay.
Well, you hit a high right here, combined with about $900,000 in 2012.
So that's a $300,000 increase.
And on the worker's comp, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that the different departments, they, any kind of training or anything that can be done to decrease that liability is done. I mean, this, I know Human Resources offers safety training, everything that can be done to decrease that liability, that would be a fair statement.
We do everything we can to reduce our liability.
I just wanted to bring that out, yeah.
I think the big thing on our worker's comp insurance is reduction in employees.
Yeah.
That's 64 employees that we're not paying worker's comp on.
But you are doing everything to reduce that liability.
Absolutely.
Without question.
And typically, if I can say something, typically worker's comp looks three years back past. And if you remember, three or four years ago, we had some pretty substantial worker's comp claims. And so now they're coming off, so that's why I'm dropped.
And we'll leave you on this presentation to you, Mrs. C.
Larry, we have a strong safety program that we provide to help with that.
We do mandatory defensive driving classes. And then we have a peer group for the safety committee. And Burke does a wonderful job, Carl. They do a great job with the safety program. And you're exactly right. Yeah, we're very strong safety program. There's some things we can't control. We can't control people falling off of dump trucks. We can't control a lot of other things, injuries that we have to, people getting shot in our dying.
Get back to that, um, insurance slide, the health insurance.
Which one?
The health insurance, that one. The cost has gone up to us to provide that, but it's also gone up to the employees to have, is that correct?
This is, this is city of Tipton cost only. This does not include the employee cost.
But it has gone up for them as well.
That has gone up substantially also.
So what those folks were making two years ago with increasing group health insurance and VICA, they're now actually making less.
That's correct.
Taking home less because the cost to work here has gone up.
That's correct.
And the benefit is less.
Yeah.
So it did that.
We've gone from a $500 a dump pool. We're now at $1,500 a dump pool and $2,500.
I just want people to be aware, sort of the public to be aware, when we talk about increase for, you know, the, at least bringing the employees up to a bare minimum standard that they are, they are taking home less because of these increasing costs to them. So...
If you do a 2% increase to employees, that just makes up for VICA.
Yeah.
Because VICA went from four, whatever it was, up to six point, what's it, 1.7? Two, five, somewhere along there. So these are, these are the costs that, that we've absorbed, if you will. Now, how did we do that? We did that by transferring money out of the gas fund up until, whatever year that was, 2010 or '11, to the tune of $600,000 a year. But there's not $600,000 a year in the gas fund that's transferred to the general fund anymore. It's just not there. Got to maintain that reserve so we can pay our gas bills. Now, we get some more industries in town, we get the gas fund flush again, get about $2 million cushion in there, then you could look at doing something like that. But right now, we just have to bite the bullet and do what we need to do to absorb these costs because we can't transfer money anymore. We transferred $250,000 last year from previous, prior year earnings. So anyway, I, I think that gives you a pretty good snapshot. Take on vehicles, that's $720,000 that we didn't have to contribute to the defined contribution And I, here's a little, Dan, you'll remember this. You don't have a good retirement plan to pay old people. You have, you have a good retirement plan to attract new qualified employees to the city of Tipton. And that's Rocky Joyner, he's the vice president and actuary of the Signal Company, who does the, the GMEB's Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System. He works with them on their board. That stuck in my mind when he said that the other day. That was, uh, from the, uh, retirement seminar we went to Friday in Savannah. That was a good, good program. We've already been through the tax audits. Does that kind of give everybody a little bit better idea of why we are where we are today? Did we miss anything? I know that we didn't include everything in there. So, um, as far as capital projects, if it wasn't a lot of enterprise funds since 2008 or '09, you know, we've, we've done very, very little capital purchases for the general fund. Long more's, had a couple of police cars in the year, but that's about it. So, there we are. And having said all that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lois and let her go through the sheet that we've incorporated in the numbers that we talked about at the last workshop. And Lois, it's all yours.
As you remember, we started out with this sheet, which gave you the preliminary numbers. Then we adjusted it as we got through our process. And now we have the last column, the 6th on K in our previous meeting where we met. And, um, what we did with this sheet was we took your recommendations, I believe Chris outlined them on his sheet. And we, for those recommendations, yeah, we cut the contingency, we decreased the contingency by $200,000.
Let me, let me, I'll get that out.
Okay. And then we delayed the radio replacements one year, but the police department has $3,000. And we delayed playground equipment one year, 12. And we come up down and the, um, $43,000 was the code enforcement officer that we removed. And decreased the gift theater by the 6944. That was the general fund portion. And we, we come up, that total is $362,444. I believe the Chris, Chris was chief, the chief providing, Mr. Karen, that was $412,500. On that, we had the $50,000 for five, we had already taken into consideration with the county's reductions. So we had already taken that as part of this first column here, as part of the 206,700 reduction. So if you come down to the bottom line, um, you can see that that's a $362,444 reduction from what it was previously. And then we added back, it was my understanding that you wanted to add back the reclassification, classification, uh, and compensation study. And we added back, uh, $255,000 for that. That's a little bit lower than what we were talking about before with the 40% of benefits.
Is that plan B?
Plan C, that's plan C. And we added that back and we removed from the general fund portion, the enterprise funds, what, what was related to the enterprise funds. So that brought that down to $255,000. And we also added in the general fund portion of the $721,000, which was $452,000. For some of that, um, retirement plan, the freezing of the retirement plan would be applied to your enterprise funds. So we, we went back and looked at $721,000 and allocated it out between the various funds, and this is the general fund portion. And that brought us down to, well, that added back and brought us back up to the 12.693. And that is a 1.2 deficit from the revenues at the current millage rate. So then we carried it a little bit further and that raised our millage rate from three to 3.5. And before, when we were talking about the four mills, we were using the entire retirement amount and the entire compensation and classification study amount here. And we went back and calculated that. Now, if you go to, from there, that takes care of the reductions that, that was provided in the last meeting of the council. If you go to the next spreadsheet, what we have done is we've added to your numbers. We've taken the, uh, the council changes on 619 and we've added other changes. We did add that $5,000 foot dilution, which we do help implement, at the time we put it in there. And Rhona reminded us that we needed to include that in there.
We're having elections.
So since we were having elections and, uh, on the second line, we've reduced, it's double 200,000 in general fund, we've reduced it to 37920.
Now, hold on, let me manage.
Okay. That's your general code.
This is the second page. Okay, I see it.
You see it, I see it. Okay, it's the seventh line.
Right.
Good.
Do you have, how much?
Just right.
How much you said?
Uh, 37920. It is right, right, right here, if you, Mr. Terrill, it's right there.
What do you mean, you have decided to reduce the contingency by $20,000? Maybe other two numbers?
Uh-huh. We reduced it by $20,000 from your instructions previously. Then we reduced it another $20,920. And we also reduced our legal expense, $180,000. So that's what makes up the 37920. All right. If you come down to the next line, which is the police department, we have $128,000. We had $100,000 previously. We've increased that another $28,000 for the four units that we were going to finance through GMIC. That was the debt for four of the units. And we're recommending that we purchase four units with the equivalent for those four units, as had been suggested in our meeting in our previous meetings. If you go down to the next line item, that has a change, $55,000, $527. That is the playground equipment. And we also reduced, uh, the equipment that was being asked for for public works by another, well, the $55,000 includes the playground equipment because that was part of the debt service as well. So all of that is debt service for requested equipment that we have reduced. Escavators, uh, mini excavator case, uh, we've delayed all the purchase of the playground equipment and that equipment one year. The code enforcement, we increased that by approximately $3,000. Then we removed that request for the code officer. It's $43,000. We went back with Burke's help and come up with the relating costs associated with that position and reduced it another $3,000. And that's what based on that was $1,500 or $3.50 there.
But that does include him getting, um, his administrative persons full time. That would allow that person to get on a full time career.
Yes, sir. That was left intact. And then, uh, the 6944 was the debt for the gift theater, which is being addressed for the hotel. And that remained as it was. So that brings us down to a 606,741 reduction after the 206,700 reduction where we, with the negotiations with Tipton County. And, um, if you look below that, even with those reductions, it's...
She's used a down arrow.
Okay. And adding back in the increase in the retirement plan, if you take a compensation and classification study, your bottom line is $12,453,000. Again, if you keep the mileage rate at the current rate, if you look at the, the current rate, it would be $11,740, $453,000.
And also my boss grew as that had.
Here, if you go back up to the total revenue, that's the total expenditures here, you have a deficit. And basically, we adjusted the contingency, we made a, a deficit on the 1 million of 38,666, which applies to the 3 million opposed increase.
So what that does is present a budget with a 3 million increase that includes unfreezing the retirement and funding plan suit.
That's correct. A balance budget. Lots of good things with mini caps and, and delaying capital equipment and the debt of that capital equipment. We've used in one employee request.
That's awesome.
And contingency and group.
I want to get labeled for it. Don't cheer up.
Don't talk to it, it's customs, honey. Don't even look at it.
That is awesome.
That is awesome. Yeah, absolutely, when you said it. Absolutely. And all of my staff.
Well, staff.
Everyone's here, the all of us, all the staff. It's, it's, it's the whole city staff.
Mayor, council, um, from our last workshop that we had, this was staff's understanding of what y'all had requested of us to do. And, um, we, we've done it. So unless there's, if, if we haven't addressed all your concerns, let us know so we can, if you have any additional concerns, we have to present a budget to the public Friday afternoon at 5:00 PM. So if this isn't what you want us to do, then you need to hear us some guidance on which way we need to go.
Lois, appreciate you doing all that, doing this stuff. I mean, I want to plug all that in.
Oh, the capital expenditure is the debt services. You said it would reduce some capital expenditures. Did it reduce any police cars or would we keep that?
Cool.
And this allows us to get our police force to the point that we need officers at that point.
I'll be, I'll be once in a while to position myself.
We would have retirement, so we can attract quality folks. We would have, not pay increase of blood yet, but at least a little bit to kind of offset some of these increasing expenses. So we would be in a good position to be able to attract all the things.
What does this do to the DDA claimant?
It funds at the same level it was last year with the theater.
Tell me what those figures are, tell me what you got.
The funding for DDA last year was 69,122.
What was it?
69,122. It was, that is $64,000 for the DDA and $5,000 for hotel holidays. And that's what makes up 69,122. It does not include that case of gift theater out totally.
Okay, so what is it for this next year, 2014?
69,122.
What was it for 2013?
69,122. Without the, that was, the beginning of what was added to that last year.
All right, so that theater was coming up. Did we add to that last year?
41,000.
Well, the total fucking put out $109,000, $109,000.
Yeah, I think it was 41,000.
Larry, you say it from here, I mean, towards darn, towards public hearing. That you had, um, University of Georgia's study on the list remind you to think about doing a mid-term adjustment. What would that do if you lived in that mid-term adjustment?
Well, we've got the, uh, 250,000, $5,000 and a half.
Yeah.
Which will be about a hundred.
But if you all look at it at mid-term adjustment, if the money weren't there, like the loss was lost, what would happen? You would just say, do it at mid-term. That was in, in the budget, to do it at mid-term.
If you, if you take half of that out, you would have money in the budget too, if you had mid-term.
At mid-term.
Which is 125, 127, 50.
So right now, unless somebody says something different, this is the budget that will be presented as a public hearing on Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
What we had before we did this, we had, we had a deficit of three hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, is that right?
That was with the proposal, the staff proposal reduction of three hundred thousand, doing away completely with three hundred thousand on contingency with renoes.
This state has three hundred contingency. It gets totaled, eleven, eleven million eight fifty-five of fifteen. And the goddamn front seat is thirty-six, six thirty-five.
Look, look around, love that, Mayor, if the three hundred, two hundred reduction is reduced.
Right.
That's, that was those, with those.
I'm looking at the old one. One dated six eight.
Yes, sir. I've got that.
That was, that was the one that took it out. That was why it's the front seat is reduced.
That did not include leaving the compensation.
We took the whole three hundred thousand contingency.
That was staff did that. And then after, after y'all looked at ours, we went back and did, in fact, she had your request in it, which was this one. And that was a one-point-two-million-dollar shortfall. And then after we took your request, we took other requests and we tweaked them and we got the shortfall down to one-point-three-eight.
Chris wanted to wipe out one as well, then he had to go back. Something about that you could do.
That's on, that's on that first sheet that sold, one-point-two-seven-million-dollar deficit.
That's on the sheets we got today.
Yes, sir. Some of that we've already taken into consideration. Okay.
We can take into consideration, so we can tell.
And then some of it was up to myself, um, they could figure that out.
Because I sound all the air conditioning.
Seventy-sixty-five. Want to do a menopause? I didn't say that. No, you got to do it. We can't press on the meeting on twenty-eighth, can we?
No.
No, not today.
Not if you're going to adopt the budget by July first.
Rob, if we could help to agree, what happened? Somebody come in here, we were a wet noodle.
I would have researched that, Jamie, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah. I saw where a small town in Georgia cut out, got five million, four million police force, you should have on the last page.
Don't cut them all out.
What town was that?
Smithville.
I mean, they cut, and it said that their, their county sheriff's office was in control. That go over like a lid, man. Times are tight everywhere, I swear to God.
Well, Jamie, that was what I had in mind when I, I will add the last workshop indicating not filling the police department up to the fifty-one. If you cut three, that would cut a half a mil. I mean, not fill three, we got six empty or seven empty, not fill three times.
Can I make a plea? Can I make a statement? And Chris is the other asset. I know it takes me thirty minutes to say what most people say in five, so bear with me here. I think we need to do, I think we need to raise this mileage to three percent. I'll tell you why. I'm so convinced this is the right thing for us. It's, it's not an easy thing, it's a hard thing. It's kind of like when you're a parent, your kids want to stay out late or want, you know, not do the homework or whatever, and you gotta kind of take that stance and say, no, the right thing is for you to go bed and go to good night's sleep, do your homework, follow your teachers. But we are in, one of the things that concerns me is economic development for this community. And we are in competition with every single city, every state across this outfit, for jobs, for industry. And I've done enough, and you all have too. We've been close enough to our friends with the downtown development authority, the county development authority, the Chamber of Commerce today, that when businesses come and look at communities, they look at a lot of things. They look at the crime rate, they look at the financial, fiscal responsibility of the city and the county, they look at the attractiveness of the community, what is there for their employees to do, that kind of quality of life, is the community an attractive place? Is it, is it a good place for employees to raise their family? They want that retention and the ability to grow within a community. And I think we're at a point that we have got to set the example for what's right when it comes to running this city. And being able to fill these positions, being able to take care of the employees, some who've been here twenty and thirty years, and to be able to attract that new talent so that that knowledge and that experience can be transferred over to them. I just, if we don't raise this mileage rate now to the three mils, I think we're just going to be sitting right here next year scratching our heads going, now what do we do? We've got to take care of our citizens, public, the, the role of city government is twofold, public safety and public works. That's our job. And we've got to take care of our citizens from a safety standpoint, we've got a phenomenal police and fire department, fortunately, we've got good talent that's, that's here, but we need more. Public works, making sure our streets are safe, they're clean, they're, you know, it's, it's, you know, I mean, the town looks terrible. We all get those calls, the town looks horrible, how are we going to attract folks to a community that's not clean? Tiffany needs to set the bar for the clean community standards. We want national recognition. And it's hard, it's not the popular thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. And I would just encourage all of us to stand united for three mils. It's, you know, it's unfortunate, I, I made the comment when I first looked at this budget, if this were my personal private business, we would have shut it down. You know, we've got two options, we can cut or we can raise, uh, in, increase revenues. We have cut down to the bone. We're in the morrow, there's no, there's nowhere else to cut. And, you know, my hat's off to these folks who have stood here, who have taken on more and more and more responsibility. I can't thank you enough for all you've done to unravel this tangled financial mess that we all unfortunately ended up with. You know, you think back a year ago, we didn't know which end was up, at least now we know which end is up. And I just, I just really encourage y'all to, I know we're going to get beat up about this, and I've, I've gotten calls, but you know what I will say? To those people that have called, when I go back and talk about public safety and, and public works and where you want to cut, they back up and say, well, no, I want good police force, I want a good fire department, I want a quality community, I want a strong library, I want a strong, you know, arts presence, I want all those things that make Tipton Tipton. And when you look at it from that standpoint, if I, if we don't do this and we can't attract, I know, um, Raymond Brennan made a comment the other day, that we do have applicants coming in at the police department, a sort of the traits of that society. That's not the officer that I want coming to my house in the middle of the night if someone's kicked my front door in and I call nine-one-one and I want an officer, I want the best, most qualified person, if my son's in a problem or whatever. So we, I think we need to rise to the occasion, I think we need to do the right thing, and I will stand with every one of you, and I will take the thrown tomatoes and I will take the, the, the kicks and the shins and those kind of things. It's the right thing to do for this community, it's a tough decision, but three mils is what we've got to do, and I just, I would encourage you to consider that.
To ask what you, to something that you just said about people moving into our town. I hadn't had a new house built in my district in four years. People that, that, that come to Tipton, I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying this, people that come for work to Tipton, they don't live in my district anymore, they moved because of the crime.
And that's not fair.
No, it's not fair. I can't, I mean, the, the, the people that, that were paying taxes now, the older people, they're just about to ready to die. And ain't no new ones coming in my district because.
They're scared of it.
And, and I would be too, because I would move to Macon and move in Channel X right now, and I grew up there. But, but I'm saying, we got to do something. And like you said, if we don't do it today, next year this time, the ones of us that's, that's here, will be sitting in the same spot, in the same room, at the same time, doing the same thing. And the same stuff will keep happening over and over again. We're not going to attract nobody, we're not going to keep these people, these, these binders crap. You know, I, I commend you for working so hard, and what you do, but you got to have some help. Now, we got to do something about this. We can't, we can't just keep pushing this fuck. We can't, we can't keep doing it. It's either, it's either crap or get off the pot. It ain't getting no better. That's it. That's just it. That's just the way I feel about it. And I'm with you, I stand, I'll take the heat. If you want to throw it to pay it good, just don't throw a wazza.
There you go, that don't hurt.
But I stand with that. We, we don't do three mils now, what are you going to get? We're going to be stuck, we're just going to be stuck.
And industry's going to pass us by. The immunity's going to continue to deteriorate.
And we don't need that.
And we don't need that.
Thank you, John.
And I do think with Lois's assistance, as we move forward in the next few years, you know, getting these monthly updates or at least quarterly, you know, I, I think we need to get in-depth, at least quarterly. We can do some projections and we can do some planning and we can do some, some goal setting. And if there ever comes a day where we can roll the village back, which has happened in the past. As we pay off debt, as we get things back in financial footing, as, as the economy comes back, as industry moves back to Tipton, maybe we can roll it back one day. I think that's something we can, you know, we can certainly look at, but the short-term thing, I think, is the usual problem. And it, and it's up to every one of us, every, every citizen of Tipton. We all benefit, all that's rising sink together, and we all benefit when the community succeeds. Looking at heart.
Well, I think you get on a very good point, Kelly. Just three mils, all it does is stops the bleeding.
Yeah.
That's all it does. If you wanted to really fix the problem, you'd be, I'd be asking for five or six, I know that we'd all get shot for that. But the point I was getting to is, every year when we do our budget, you can readdress the middle trade. If the money's there, fine, you know, roll it back. But if the money's not there, you can't roll it back. And we can't keep operating and going in the hole every year. We just can't do that. And that's what we're doing. You saw the transfers, we're in the red every single year almost. Y'all ask us to do a job, we got to have the resources to do the job.
We're just in a good pick long.
Well, you know, folks say you need to run the government like a business. If you run government like a business, you increase revenue or you cut expenses. Well, we had to cut expenses.
Again and again and again and again.
You seen the payroll go down? We done cuts, we've not bought equipment. We've let our fleet deteriorate to the point that, I think Crystal had fifteen items on her list that she knew could replace this year, which we couldn't do, that was just my fault.
All I want to say is, everybody. I know the city family has hurt, have been hurt since this just happened. It was here for any bond this guy. It was coming. September two thousand eight. People making tough decisions all over the state. It's not just municipalities, it's, it's the state. We got G-Dot, no raises, their insurance has gone up, they've had bribes, teachers have bribes. We've had people that laid off in our community. And for those that don't have home state essential, uh, we hurt. I'll say this, most of those without the home state essential, and without being senior citizens of ownership, you ain't going to hurt them. Those are the people that own the big apartment complexes and a lot of big property, buildings downtown, they're going to pass this on to the people that try to talk about hurting them. They are going to, I will align, but, but I don't compare with all the big boys. I guarantee you, they're going, if they're going to raise their rents, they're going to do something to make up the increase, and that's going to hurt the citizens again. Once again. I think I'm ready to, like, I agree with you about the need of the six, but everybody's hurting there, everybody. I just don't have a big, I don't have a big, this, I don't see a way to do anyone but as much as you're rushing to make.
Mayor, if you look at the screen, you know, y'all passed the resolution to increase the home state essential to twenty-five to thirty-five.
Right.
That's the, that's what the number is. It'll show up.
There you were, senior citizen. I, I was careful with the senior.
Well, it gets under thirty-three eighty, and then it gives fifteen dollars if you add three mils on it.
Right.
And that has to be voted on, but I don't know anyone's going to vote against a home state essential, Chris.
I think it's going to be okay, but remember, county went up on them, I think that's the only reason we did that, because county did, I got a special tax district to increase them, and we get that, swap the route up.
They did, they increased all the city residents, did they?
Well, yeah, but we tried to help, this is part of trying to help the city.
Right, right. But I just want to say, the county did increase, they're allowed to pay more county taxes as a city resident than a county resident pays in county taxes as a non-city resident.
Yeah, they put a special tax district on it. I've tried to tell the seniors they're going to be okay no matter what happens. I know they've called me, and, uh, I think I've been on the phone with them. But then you got your general homeowners that don't have anything, but they just pay the afterthought, they've got homes dead. A couple called me the other day, Mayor, you know who they are, I can't think of who it is now. They got an old house they moved out of and they rent that house, but all this is in their income, and they said, well, we're senior citizens, we don't have to pay any extra for that other house. I said, yeah, you will. Yeah, you will. Your home state exemption and your senior reduction doesn't help you on that second half.
Mayor, I don't know anybody out there that's, if the government electives just reduce their workforce by twenty-one percent. That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And even with those associated reductions in there, the, we're still going backwards. I mean, we cut everything, and we're still going backwards.
I don't know if we can have a seat, but have a city manager, just take it on. I don't know, we have shit, we have a city manager that's taking on three different director slots. Oh, what he's done, I mean, that's what's so frustrating about it, you know, these folks have done all, they think this. I'll tell you, if I do vote for any kind of tax increase, there's gotta be a sunset. And I know you don't agree with me.
But you can't sunset it, you have to redo it, you have to look at it every year.
Well, there's gonna actually be a side, a side promise, we're gonna come back down.
We can't do that, Jamie, that's kind of funny.
Well, they.
Ask, ask our turn though.
Well, I mean, we can't have a statement, a mission statement of tax increase that says our, our objective is to sunset this at some time. That doesn't hold you to another budget completely.
You can make a statement that that would be your ultimate goal if the financial potential changes, but you can't make that part of the, um, resolution as far as adopting a budget. You can say, this is what we like to do, but as Larry said, this is just an annual analysis.
Oh, we like it.
And that's why I was saying, you know, with Lois's help, if we can look at this, you know, and, and sort of eat itself at one night at a time, monthly, quarterly, so that we can be a little more proactive as the year goes along.
Julie, you're in the, uh, you're in the sales, you're doing our good job, but I'm, maybe I'm too optimistic. I swear, I think the county is finally, I, I, I just, I don't think it'll be forever. And I think it's time I don't do stuff like this, and, um, I, I'll do that, it's some, I'll do that, it's probably.
I'll tell you, yeah, I'm not sales business, I had, um, a gentleman that came in from Boston who was looking at taking a position in hospital. Not super nice guy, wouldn't come to Tifton until next year, but we're sort of doing the community tour, which is, I enjoy doing, working with him on that. And, you know, um, what, what's interesting is when you get in your car with someone and you're showing your talent and, and you're actually seeing it through their eyes. You know, someone who's never been to Tifton before, probably never even really heard of Tifton, to be honest with you, that, um, it's amazing how you look at the community with those, those fresh eyes. And you see things that I think we just sort of get used to seeing every day as we drive around town. And it really hit, struck me the other day as we were driving through downtown, because I always show off our downtown area, how that had looked. I mean, there's, there's a lot of good stuff going on too, but, you know, it was like, there's our public works, you know, it, I mean, we used to be like, is it that clean community? You know, and, and, you know, we used to have a saying at Main Street, sweep the front porch, this company's coming, you know, and you want that. You want people to come into your town and, and look at it and go, wow, this place has got it going on. From, you know, a, a, a lower crime rate, you got the interstate coming through, it brings all these neat businesses and restaurants with that, you got a, a popping little downtown that's unique and it's fun and it's great, and. All those things that make a community attractive, not only to the citizens, but those people who want to come be a part of it. So, um, it just kind of hit me the other day, driving this gentleman around, we've lost our luster. And, um, you know, if, if, if I feel that way and I'm trying to sell this community to someone that's gonna come be an important part of it. How do we, how do we know that someone's not driving through this town at any given time saying, okay, I think I want to be in Georgia, because they've got some great incentives for industry and that kind of thing. And I think I want to be in South Georgia, because that seems attractive, but they drive through and they say, well, maybe not Tifton, maybe I'll go in that, that Austin.
Yeah.
Or maybe I'll go over to Wake Forest, wherever, go wherever, so, you know, it's, it's just food for thought, it's not argument for against.
No, I appreciate it. It's Crawford up, says that immediately, you and Larry.
He, well, I don't know what he said.
He had been traveling lately.
Yes, yes. And, and, you know, interestingly, Crawford's stuff and, and, um, I hate to talk about him, he's not here, but we'll, we'll talk about him since he's not here.
Yeah, Crawford, he's a company today.
But, you know, was, was, um, my impression of what Crawford was saying the other day at the public hearing was he was opposed to the mileage increase, but after we kind of sat out there and talked about it, I think he kind of took a step back and said, okay.
I got it, not you and Larry got it.
I, I think I can live with this, I, I may not like it, but I can live with it, I see where you're going with this.
Yeah.
I was gonna say that what he said about the, the beauty and the clean community, he's driven across this country, from California to Tifton.
That's right.
And the place that looked the most unaccounted was Tifton.
When he drove along into his hometown.
And, and, and of course, I was quick to tell him, that's not our, our fault.
That's right.
It's anybody's fault, city council. And I said, you know, we're doing so much more with less, and it just catches up with you sooner or later. I mean, we're blessed, I've always said we have some of the best control. I have a couple of comments.
If I don't give you more comments, then this is the budget's gonna be presented product.
Do you need some kind of like a motion to that effect, or is this just?
This is a little show.
And he doesn't like the sentences, so. It would be, it would be a teddy.
Basically, what would happen is that Mayor will pose this budget on, on Friday after the public hearing, and of course, you know, someone can make a motion regarding the budget, and then of course, that motion be amended, just depending on how y'all, um, play that out when you actually get ready to take a vote on the budget.
In your discussion, that's your first one, second? Then if there's any changes to this, or let's, let's say you don't do three mills, just for sake of discussion. And you know how much the bills were, it's right there on paper. And y'all would threaten me to build a budget, revise this budget, go back, make the cuts, whatever we need to do based on those rates that you're threatening, or not. If you say no mill increase, then we'll go take the million dollars out of the budget somewhere.
I think can we do a much, village increase or decrease, is it only a certain time of year, or is it?
I think it's just once, you know, randomly.
You got to do it in conjunction with the, uh, budget.
That's, that's a law.
Well, you have to get it in, in time so that the tax assessor's office, the tax office of the county. This will change your tax digest, and that is the problem. This is all built on a blinder tax digest. So when the county finalizes, they, they have to send that into the line. Once that's finalized, then they'll come back and say, okay, these, this is what your tax digest is for the next fiscal year. I'm just gonna leave you with this thought. Your city staff and your city manager needs three mills to stop the bleeding.
And that's not putting a tourniquet on, that's just stopping the bleeding.
That's a Band-Aid.
That's right.
That's all it is. It's just a Band-Aid.
Well, let me just say this, if we're able to have it spoken that much here, but I appreciate you, Jamie, and I appreciate you and what they say in the standard. And I, I still, I totally made my mind, I'm probably not leaning that, that's true, that, that much, but God, I appreciate y'all. And, and, you know, I helped with my thought process, and it's, y'all both very passionate about it, and deeply, and that's one of my benefits.
Well, I really need, let me say one more thing, and I'm, and I'm gonna say this number back there. But if you read the paper this morning, all those shootings happened in my district. Every one of them, every door that was kicked in happened in my district. It's just like when drugs started, it started over in my district, then it started to move that way. If you don't stop, get some police officers out here to head this thing off, it's gonna, the door kicking in, the shooting gonna move that way. I'm through, that's all I gotta say right there.
Let's go to comments or get any more questions. This workshop ends here.